Okay, we're gonna get started in about two minutes. Some members of council and administration may be attending to meeting today through video conferencing. I'll remind those attending through video conferencing to ensure your video camera and microphone are turned off, and when speaking, remember to unmute and enable your video camera. Notice notices of motion on today's agenda will be noted in the meeting minutes as read into the record at approval of agenda, and will be debated by council on the following meeting dates. On March twenty, on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, MN twenty-five dash five playground accessibility. MN twenty-five dash six houselessness crisis. MN twenty-five dash seven amend the zoning bylaw, bylaw number twenty nineteen nineteen, making room for affordable manufactured homes citywide. And on a future date to be determined by the city clerk, and we're looking for, after the budget timeline likely. MN twenty-five dash four reconsideration of fluoridation of Regina's water supply. And I'm now gonna call on councillor Sarah Turnbull to read her motion MN twenty-five dash five playground accessibility out loud, as councillor Turnbull would be bringing significant changes to what was originally published in published in her notice of motion. Go ahead councillor Turnbull.
Okay, I wanted to read one whereas statement, and then we'll read the whole there four beat resolved. There was one new whereas statement, which was whereas accessible inclusive playgrounds are defined in multiple legislations, most notably the ADA and playground suppliers provide different design selections based upon these definitions. Therefore, be it resolved that city council direct, direct administration to make the following changes to the city of Regina accessible playground standard effective immediately respecting all new and ongoing projects. Definition of accessible playground accessibility is about travel, movement, and approach or entry. A playground that is accessible is one that is easy for a person who uses a mobility device to maneuver to and around. Definition of inclusive playground designed to meet the needs of a variety of disabilities such as visual impairments, hearing impairments, communication, cognitive disabilities, sensory sensitivities, physical disabilities, et cetera. Designed thoughtfully to encourage engagement and interaction of both of multiple abilities. Both neighborhood and destination playgrounds are to meet the principles of both accessible and inclusive playgrounds. Accessible play elements must be appropriate for a person with a mobility device to move or maneuver around. Neighborhood playgrounds have a minimum accessible element change from forty percent to fifty percent. Both destination and neighborhood playgrounds are constructed with only accessible surfacing to meet ASTM nineteen fifty-one standards and remove engineered wood fiber as an acceptable choice. A maximum of fifteen percent of the accessible elements require a person to exit their mobility device. Accessible play routes have a minimum width of one thousand one hundred millimeters. Sorry, lost my spot here. Sensory planting beds should have a minimum of twenty percent of the beds raised to the following accessibility dimension requirements. Have a top surface of eight hundred and sixty millimeters maximum. Have knee and toe space for a front approach that is seven hundred and thirty-five millimeter minimum height at the front edge. Five hundred millimeter minimum deep and nine hundred minimum wide. Transfer stations are not to be included within an accessible route. All areas designated for accessibility devices, including quiet areas, also to include space for an adult caregiver or friend. Sensory plantings or plants are not to be included in the Countess play components. Destination playgrounds are to be located on a transit route. A minimum of fifteen twenty-five millimeter turning diameter must be provided at the end of accessible path, walkway or corridor, including platforms for slides, poles, climbing structures. One type of play experience is to be accessible. Type of play experiences is listed in appendix B, reference for side by side of play of varying abilities. On destination playgrounds, consideration of service dog accommodations and consideration for mobility device slash stroller parking. A minimum size for a destination playground is to be three hundred meters square. Elevated play is not a requirement to an accessible playground. Washroom is not a requirement of an accessible playground, but is encouraged to. Designate that playgrounds and parks that do not meet the standard of the Regina accessible playgrounds are not to be identified or labeled as accessible and are to be removed from the designation playground map and other published materials. Three, direct administration to utilize the Regina accessible playground standard when preparing future park and playground site reports. Four, require developers to follow the Regina accessible playground standard for new playgrounds. Five, direct administration to report back in quarter three twenty twenty-five and advance the budget deliberation for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. Respecting, A, current pathways or playgrounds constructed with engineered wood fiber to be tested to meet ASTM nineteen fifty-one levels with rotational pentrometer with a subsequent recommendation to outline maintenance or replacement solutions to keep surfaces maintained to an ASTM nineteen fifty-one level. B, investigation of a central indoor location for the creation of an indoor all year round destination playground. Minimum three hundred meters squared in size, include city of Regina properties, real properties, and possible private partnerships. Include within recreational master plan. C, develop a strategic playground plan to develop access to a destination playground for all residents within a maximum travel time of fifteen, oh sorry, of twenty-five minutes on a transit route or eight minutes by car. Prioritize locations with adjacencies to schools, childcare centers, community centers, group homes, senior centers, and health centers. Include possible partnerships, timelines, and cost options to achieve full community coverage. Include strategic playground playground plan within that recreational master plan with a minimum recommendation of renewing a playground annually. D, investigate options to create or utilize an existing grant program for community groups who are upgrading or creating new playgrounds to meet the Regina accessible playground standard. Include stakeholder engagement to understand an effective financial incentive in groups. And E, present proposed new playground design to accessibility committee for review prior to final decisions and purchase.
Thank you councillor Turnbull. So all questions and debate on the motion will be held until March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Can I have someone move a motion to approve the agenda at the call of the chair? Councillor Burton and a secondar, councillor Flores. I will call the question, any opposed? And carried. Okay, can I have someone move a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February twelfth? Oh, no, not yet Shannon, you're good. I'll get someone to move a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the February twelfth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting. Councillor Rasevich, any errors or missions? Okay, I will call the question, any opposed? And carried. Okay, we will now consider the consent agenda. The consent agenda is moved and voted upon without debate as one item regardless of the number of agenda items included in it. The consent agenda for this meeting includes the following items. CR twenty-five dash fifteen, twenty twenty-five Q-two to Q-four council and committee meeting calendar. CR twenty-five dash seventeen emergency treatment fund funding agreement. CR twenty-five dash eighteen recycling stewardship program changes. CR twenty-five dash nineteen, twenty twenty-four road renewal program update. Twenty and CR twenty-five dash twenty boundary alteration, twenty twenty-five property tax exemptions. I will ask that when moving the consent agenda, the mover move concurrence with the following amendment to item CR twenty-five dash twenty boundary alteration, twenty twenty-five property tax exemptions. And I quote that appendix A to item CR twenty-five dash twenty be replaced with an amended appendix A to correct a numerical error as noted in a footnote on page three of the amended appendix A. I will now ask if any member wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda for consideration and debate at this meeting. Councillor Zakidniak, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to remove, excuse me, CR twenty-five dash nineteen, twenty twenty-four road renewal program update.
Okay. So, item CR twenty-five dash nineteen, twenty twenty-four road renewal program update is deemed removed from the consent agenda and will be considered by council in the agenda order. agenda, and will be considered by council in the agenda order at the call of the Chair. Okay, so now, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with an amendment to replace Appendix A of CR25, or sorry, CR25-20 with amended Appendix A, as well as the removal of CR25-19, the Road Renewal Program Update? Can I get a motion for that? Councillors Zakidniak and a secondar, Councillor Mancinelli? And any opposed? And carried. Okay, we're now going to move on to public notice bylaws. We're now going to consider, yeah, the public notice bylaws. I'll be asking Acting Deputy Mayor Mark Burton to do the first reading of Bylaw Number 2025-12, the Procedure Amendment Bylaw, 2025.
2025-12, the Procedure Amendment Bylaw, I move, seconded by Councillor Rasovitch, that Bylaw Number 2025-12 be introduced and read a first time.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk to start the vote.
Mayor, the motion pass, or first reading passes ten to zero, and for the record, Councillor Frow is temporarily absent from the meeting.
Thank you. Acting Deputy Mayor Burton, can you please do a second reading of the bylaws?
I move, seconded by Councillor Siklis, that Bylaw Number 2025-12 be read a second time.
Does any member of council have any questions? Councillor Zakidniak, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I see that this bylaw is to repeal the proclamation provisions, and I just wanted, if the clerk could elaborate, like, is this in terms of, in relation to the, what we passed for the flag policy changes?
Through you, Mayor, yes, Councillor Zakidniak. Previously, the proclamations policy, while complimentary to the flag policy, was contained in the procedure bylaw while the flag policy was a policy. This change pushes everything into the policy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, in that case, I will ask the clerk to start the vote.
Mayor, second reading.
Mayor, second reading. Passes ten to zero. Thank you. Acting Deputy Mayor Burton, can you please do consent for a third reading of the bylaws?
I move, seconded by Councillor Flores. The council hereby consent to Bylaw Number 2025-12 going to third reading at this time, at this meeting.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk to start the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Unanimous consent to proceed to third reading at today's meeting has been achieved with all members voting in favor.
Thank you. Acting Deputy Mayor Burton, can you please do a final reading of the bylaws?
I move, seconded by Councillor Turnbull, that Bylaw Number 2025-12 be read a third time.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk to start the vote.
Mayor, third reading is passed ten to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to public notice reports. So we will now consider Item CR25-14, Zoning Bylaw Administrative Amendments, and I will ask Councillor Siklis to please introduce the report.
Hey, thank you. Through you, Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. The report is named CR, no, RPC25-4. Did I get that right? Zoning Bylaw Administrative Amendments?
Yeah?
Okay. It's a very exciting title. I'm sure you'll all remember it. If you've had a chance to take a look, what we did there was try and align for clarity, consistency, and some flexibility, a number of existing regulations, and we made some proposals. They number five, eight, eleven, twenty-four of them. And we put those forth with the recommended changes, and we would like to approve these recommendations. Any questions?
So first, I'll have someone move the report. Councillor Zakidniak, do you want to speak to the report at all, councillor? Oh, before? Sorry. Can I get a second or first? Councillor Flores? And now, Councillor Zakidniak, do you have anything to speak to on that report?
Um, yeah, I guess first, like, does, my first question to administration, if there's any of these changes that administration would like to highlight? I understand, you know, it's clarity, consistency, flexibility, but if there's any particular changes to highlight from your perspective?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I'll have Mr. Mario highlight anything of note.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Through the Chair, I would say that there are no amendments that are impactful in the sense that they're going to change, change any outcomes. I would say that a lot of these are really just intended to bring some consistency and to make sure that our zoning bylaw is, is able to be interpreted consistently. I would, I would maybe point to Amendments fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, which have to do with additional changes to the PS zone, which is intended to accommodate the indoor aquatics facility. Other than that, a lot of the changes are really just intended to bring everything in line with some of the changes that we had dealt with last year. And the last thing I would say is there will be a more comprehensive review coming this year, so you will be able to get a, sort of a fresh, fresh eyes look on what's coming in about a year from now.
Okay. One question I do have is, I just want some clar, some better understanding of what's intended by Amendment Ten, which is talking about parking lot as a discretionary use, as a temporary option for a particular policy area. So I'm not quite understanding that one. If you can help me understand, because I understand it's not changing anything significantly, so I think we're talking about a very specific instance, and so if you can help me understand what this is intended to address, that would help me.
Certainly, through the mayor, that is intended for a specific situation. It is, there is a location within the Canterbury neighborhood, which is zoned as a special zone, direct control district. There is an identified need for a, to address a parking sort of shortfall in the area. So what we're proposing to do here is to allow for parking to be accommodated as a temporary land use to suit the needs of a tenant. So right now, the current policy and zoning bylaw requires this to be residential. This is to sort of allow the current landowner a little bit of flexibility to accommodate parking as a temporary basis until such time that a residential development is needed, and parking could be accommodated as part of a permanent development later on.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor Burton, go ahead.
So, as we go through some of these changes here, you know, some themes here are about parking, and it's get rid of any minimum regulations, just free-for-all, let people park where they may or where they may not, because there may not be spaces for that. Could you expand a bit, something in the administration, expand a bit on the theme that you're pursuing here with saying, well, eliminate all the minimums, we let the market bear, and, you know, we have a real housing supply shortage in Regina. And you say, well, why don't you buy a house with enough spots? That's all I could find. I was just kind of wondering if you could expand on some of how you see this playing out. I have residents complaining, it's minus forty out. A number of weeks ago, we came to the big warm-up, a number of weeks ago, it's minus forty, and people are saying, I can't plug my car in, I don't have any parking related to my spot. I've only got one spot for my vehicle, and there's two of us in our house. I was wondering if you could expand on where you see this going and how people can live. There's many parts of the city where density and public transit works. There's many places where people have to take their car, they're going to spend hours getting to and from work, or picking up their kids, or doing anything.
Miss, Mr. Mario?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can understand that removing parking requirements in a city like Regina may be counterintuitive. But I would say that cities across North America are taking this approach, and this includes all sorts of cities, big and small, across Canada, United States, warm and cold. And they're doing this because it's, the concept of parking requirements leading to standard requirements is largely ineffective regulation, and it can lead to bad outcomes when applied to a city as a whole. So the way that parking requirements typically work is they're applied as a standard measure per floor area, depending on the land use. So if you look at retail, our former bylaw would have required one stall per twenty square meters, just as an example. So if you're Costco, and you want to build a new, new, new site, you would be required to meet that standard. But of course, Costco has their own needs, they understand their business a lot more than the city of Regina does, so they would voluntarily provide more parking than what our, our standard would be. But if you also compare that as a different situation, Canadian Tire, which is, you know, also a retail business, they would require much less parking than the standard would require. So what that results in is a lot of wasted space. If you're familiar with Canadian Tire, there's always a lot of additional parking stalls that are completely empty all of the time. So this is the, this is the outcome that we're trying to avoid. We're trying to make sure that our city is built to a standard that is as efficient as possible, that we're taking advantage of our infrastructure, that we're creating, you know, we're taking advantage of the infrastructure investment. So, site by site, as this standard is applied, it kind of leads to, leads to these issues when it's applied year over year. So our experience, as we've applied this over the past year or so, is that we have seen some uptake on the residential side of reducing parking requirements. Our former standard would have been one stall per unit. And so far, what we've seen is sort of in the downtown area, the downtown fringes, we have seen developments that come forward with something less than that. So developers are taking a calculated risk based on, based on what they see as being their tenant needs for the future. So, you know, just anecdotally, we're seeing resident, we're seeing developments for residential, resident doctors, or nurses, or seniors, just life, different lifestyles or lower income that wouldn't necessarily need access to a car. We've not seen any trend towards reducing parking that would have been required in the suburbs. You know, there's a lot of risk, I think, that's associated if you propose a project that doesn't have the parking needs. You're going to have a tough time renting that space, you're going to have a tough time selling it. So there is sort of a lot more risk that's placed on the developer than there is on the city. So that's the whole idea behind this city kind of taking a step back from requiring parking. Nobody is saying that Regina doesn't need parking, we're only saying that it doesn't necessarily need to be regulated as a standard.
Thank you. Through the Chair, I guess the bigger concern is the, you mentioned blanket kind of covering all over the city, and there are definitely many areas of the city where density can be achieved, and a low transit time, and people want to live a lifestyle where they can walk and take the bus. But as you move further out, then you tend to find more people that do want that space, they do want that second vehicle, they want a vehicle for their child, and they want that freedom, they want that ability to do the many things that they want to do, to take their kids to sports, to events, to travel, to do all the things that, that you want to with your, your means that you may have. And I believe that right now with this blanket kind of coverage here right now, that handcuffs many people, and then with the housing shortage, people are then forced to buy houses in the very outside of the city, and it makes the lifestyle, the living in Regina, very difficult for them. That is of great concern. I was just wondering why if you could discuss a bit of the, why it's kind of seems to be blanket and not a bit more targeted or variable depending on circumstances and environments that might be there.
Go ahead, Mr. Mario.
Yeah, through the Chair, there, you know, there is some nuance in the way that parking standards have been applied to the past, so it's not necessarily one-size-fits-all, but, you know, the point is that it's, it's very difficult to try to standardize even when you're looking at a smaller geographical area. You know, respectfully, in Ward Four, I would say that all of, all of the development that was approved within that area would have met parking standards. There, there's very little development that, that has occurred since, since the time that we have removed parking standards that, that doesn't meet at least the, the former standard. I think what the, the issue that we're seeing in that area is that there are more people in that area trying to live in the same space, and they all bring their cars with them, and that's, the reason why that happened is because people's income didn't keep up with the, the price of building a home. So something has got to give in that, in that situation, and what has given is there are, there's less real, less real estate per person, and there's a higher density. So that's why there's a higher impact of more vehicles parked on the street and things like that. It really had nothing to do with changing parking standards or anything like that.
So I'm just, I'm just going to interject quick, because I think the parking, like, that part of it, I think, approved. So this is the administrative part to a lot for the application of that. I just want to be clear from administration to make sure we're not debating something that was already approved. Is that, is that correct? Okay, so is there anything in terms of the, the application of what's, like, it's already been approved? If you want, it might be one good one to take offline if you want to.
You betcha. No, okay, I'm, okay.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Mancinelli, go ahead.
Thank you. I hate to step in on parking again. I just looked at Amendment Number Eighteen and trying to figure out the caviated parking regulations and how that moves across the city. I guess where I'm looking is thinking of some of the uses of parking for service vehicles where it's allowed, and if all the parking across city is unified, service vehicles and large vehicles, what does that mean if it's changed that way?
Through the Chair, we're removing the, the references to shared and caviated parking because there is no standard by which to apply this. So in, in certain zones, we would still allow for parking lots to develop, they just wouldn't necessarily be off-site or caviated. They, they may be a discretionary use, so there still is opportunity to develop purpose-built single-use parking lots within the zoning bylaw.
I appreciate that. As I totally misunderstood the amendment in its entirety, so thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other questions, I will go back to the mover, Councillor Zakidniak. Would you like to close debate? You're good? You're good? Okay. Okay, so in that case, I will ask the clerk to start the vote, please.
Mayor, the motion passes nine to one. Those voting in favor were Councillors Mancinelli, Bezo, Turnbull, Zakidniak, Rasovitz, Flores, Siklis, Radins, and yourself, Mayor. Voting against was Councillor Burton. Voting against was Counselor Burton.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to consider CM twenty-five dash two, the Twenty Twenty Four Election Expenses and Contribution Disclosure Report. So the recommendation here is to receive and file, it's an informational report. So I'm going to ask the city clerk to please introduce the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This report is something that is required based on the Regina Municipal Election Expenses Bylaw, which requires candidates who run for the position of mayor or councillor for the city complete and submit to the returning officer a sworn statement of their compliance with the bylaw respecting contributions and spending limits. This is a requirement that is also requires candidates, whether they're elected or not, to submit within ninety days after the election, and this year the deadline was February eleventh of Twenty Twenty Five. I can tell you that of the sixty-three candidates who put their names forward for either mayor or councillor, all but two have complied with the requirements under this act. So basically, what this means is that those two individuals will not be receiving their hundred-dollar deposit back, and we will subsequently work with our legal department to determine the pursuit of prosecutions if necessary or if applicable. Other than that, the report outlined some other background information so that people understand what the spending limits were, and everything else was there. And just for the clarification of members, we will be bringing a fulsome report to council, I believe, April ninth, and that will be the report that outlines how did things go during the Twenty Twenty Four election, some of the lessons we learned, some of the things we're looking forward to implementing in the Twenty Twenty Eight election. So this is merely a very short technical report respecting the expense contributions.
Thank you. So first, can I have someone to, sorry, can I have someone move to receive and file the report? Counselor Mancinelli, and a seconder, please. Counselor Radins. Counselor Mancinelli, anything you'd like to say on it?
Sure. Appreciate the report. Question through the chair to the city clerk. The additional information you'll be returning with. I know what I spent on this election, and I know how many billboards my picture was on. Will we find out how much other people spent on this election, or the effects of those third-party advertisers on our election that participated with us so nicely?
Not really. Sorry to be so vague. The third-party regulations are very, or legal field is very vague. I think that by notice of your question, we'll make sure that we speak with our legal department to provide the best fulsome answer we can in that regard, because it has been, the restrictions are very vague in terms of, are you advancing a candidate, or you just, is that third party just putting out their opinion? It's my understanding in Saskatoon during the last election that there was a court case that said you can't prosecute someone for publicizing their opinion on something. So it's a very gray area. I wish I had a better answer. I don't. We'll work to have a better answer next month when we bring the report together, because I'm sure Ms. Williams is taking great notes on this and will help us immensely.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Yes, I, through the chair, I don't have much more to add at this point. We will be working with the clerk's office with respect to that report, and we'll be providing as much information as we can, but I don't disagree with the points that the clerk has made with respect to the vagueness of these provisions with regards to third-party advertising. So we will, we will work with the clerk though, and we will provide more information at that time, and we would be asking also, like, the provincial, for provincial clarification around some of the rules as well, because they are some of the ones that also actually enforce legislation around those rules.
Appreciate that, and I just want to take a moment to say that municipal government is the most transparent government. Our election expenses, the movements we make, and being amongst our neighbors all the time kind of leads it that way. Any kind of recommendations that could be moved forward to stop this in the future, or even just to name the people? I think it's totally within play for someone to go against me and spend out all they want. I'm happy I probably spent less than them, but I think that's totally fair game. But I think the public should know who's putting the money behind it. So any type of recommendations on policy changes to make accountability part of every aspect of elections, I think is really important for transparency in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zekidniak?
Oh, my, I fully agree in support what Counselor Mancinelli is requesting. Now, I have a couple of questions. First one, I don't know if this is something that could be provided in public or not, but the clerk had noted that, you know, there were all but two candidates that compiled with the submitting expenses and all the regulations, and I wrote what you said, which was more details about the pursuit of prosecution, or sorry, that there would be, like, the legal would be considering the pursuit of prosecution if applicable. Are there any additional details about how that works that can be shared publicly, or is that a private conversation? Like, the if-applicable component?
Through you, Mayor. If memory serves me, but I may ask Ms. Gentili, our elections coordinator, to provide a comment on this. We have had prosecutions in the past. I believe in the twenty, after the Twenty Twenty election, there may have been some desire from council not to aggressively pursue people, you know, if it gives this a minor transgression, or is this serious? We will make one last overture to both candidates who have outstanding reports to say, you know, you missed the deadline, you're not getting your deposit back, we're trying to help you avoid a potential prosecution. So I think that's kind of a step we're going to take in the interim. So we don't just rush out and say, let's go to court. It takes a lot of effort, and again, it will be determined if this was a candidate who got seven votes, maybe they spent a dollar twenty. I mean, I'm not trying to be facetious or frivolous, but you have to make sure that what we're pursuing, notwithstanding the fact that they didn't comply with the legislation, is worth it. So I don't know if Ms. Gentili has something else to add?
Through you, Chair, no, I didn't really have anything else to add. You've covered it. Okay, well, I hear what you're saying. I think it is serious. Like, I think it's, we all knew what needed to occur. We all need to follow the rules, we all need to disclose the same information, so I think it's serious not to compile, or sorry, not to follow the rules that were laid out for all of us. And I think that casts doubt on the transparency of others when folks won't follow what was clearly laid out as the rules. So that's my comment on that. Now, in terms of the election expenses and contribution, is all of that, is any piece of that regulated through our municipality, or are all provisions and related to rules regulated provincially? Like, if we wanted to strengthen transparency and accountability in the process, do we have any ability to do that municipally?
Well, through you, Mayor, I'll turn that to the city solicitor because of the legislation that's required, but I do think that we would, we do have some flexibility in terms of what we put into the municipal expenses bylaw, in terms of, we could, we could say, for example, that you could spend, you could have twice as much room to spend, or half as much, you could change the deposit. The deposit is currently a hundred dollars per candidate for mayor or councillor. It's my understanding in Saskatoon, it's been five hundred dollars for at least one, if not two, election terms. There will be some people who say that that will ensure that you have serious candidates. On the other hand, people will say you are really discouraging people who may be, you know, less affluent from running, or have less ability to raise funds. So it cuts both ways. It will be something that we will be working with, legal counsel, when we come approximately two years from now, or two and a half years from now, with planning for the Twenty Twenty Eight election, with some suggested changes that we would look for council confirmation of.
Okay.
Ms. Williams, did you want to comment on that, or does that cover?
Just through the chair, I would just clarify that I agree with respect to the municipal expenses bylaw, that is what the municipality has some say over. The Local Government Elections Act is provincial, and that's what governs some of the other third-party advertising, so that is not within our purview, but with respect to what the city clerk has indicated in terms of the expenses and the deposits and those kinds of things, that is within the purview of the city.
Okay, so what I heard is, if I'm interested in exploring opportunities to continue to strengthen our regulations and continue to ensure we are the most transparent and accountable level of government, that I can look to the municipal expenses bylaw to see what we have jurisdiction over, and when you come back in two to two and a half years, that would be a time where we could bring forward amendments, if there were some, to, for potential changes for future elections.
Through you, Mayor, yes, Counselor Zekidniak, that's accurate. And just to confirm, as my deputy clerk has reminded me, again, I've said it already, we do reach out to candidates one last time.
Right.
And ninety-nine times out of a hundred, that will result in them saying, oh, I forgot, or I was out of the country, particularly if, you know, they may not, once the election's over, they may not give this a lot of thought.
Yep.
So we're not trying to be punitive, we are trying to ensure that everybody does respect the law. I think after the Twenty Sixteen election, I think we did actually prosecute a couple of people, but that's the way it is.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, I see no other questions, I will go back to Counselor Mancinelli as the mover. Would you like to close debate? Okay, with that, I will ask the clerk to start the vote, please.
Mayor, the motion passes ten to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we will now consider item CR twenty-five dash sixteen, Semiannual Review of Closed Executive Committee Items. Again, this is another informational report with the recommendation to receive and file. I'm going to ask Counselors Zekidniak to please introduce the report.
One last time, I will introduce our executive committee reports. All right, so, I mean, that one's, this one's super straightforward, because, and this one was discussed because there are closed items in a private exec meeting, so, you know, all, every, so often, like, this is a requirement, so that we can ensure that we don't have outstanding reports that are left hanging, that everything is resolved and directed to the appropriate channels, whether remaining closed or being forwarded to public exec if appropriate.
Thank you very much. Can I have someone move to receive and file the report? Counselor Mancinelli, seconder, please. Counselor Burton, thank you. Counselor Mancinelli, anything to say? Nope. Okay. Any questions from council on this? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Mancinelli, last gasp. You're good? Okay, I will then ask the clerk to start the vote, please.
Mayor, the motion passes ten to zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now go on to consider item CR twenty-five dash nineteen, Twenty Twenty Four Road Renewal Program Update, and I will ask Counselors Zekidniak to please introduce the report.
Sure. And so this is, again, a regular report that we have, which is just progress, like, an update on the road renewal program for both our residential road, residential roads, and I was trying to get the acronyms, but I won't, and our street infrastructure renewal, so all roads, like, what's the progress, what happened last year, what's going to happen in the next year. So it is the receive and file. I don't need to mention my amendment right now, or yes? Oh, right, so instead of moving the receive and file, though, what I would like to move another option that's embedded in the report, it's an expanded option from the report. I think the clerks will put it up on the screen. And what we have is, this was an alternate option, Part One, which was to explore and identify options to either our level of service, well, both of them, level of service and investment needs, like, either or. We, what we learned from this report at executive committee is that we are not currently meeting, at least for street infrastructure renewal, our, the level of service that administration had set as their target. And so knowing that, and knowing that they forecast some significant issues in terms of, for sure, the street infrastructure renewal program, I, I'm, you know, we've received that information, and I would like to hear, I'd like them to investigate, do we need different changes to our level of service, or to our investment, or both? And for the, I added, this was not part of the option in the report, but I added that I would also like this information considered for the residential road renewal program. Although we are close to meeting our targets for the city, we also saw that there are many, that there's inequitable distribution of roads in, of the condition of roads throughout the city, so I would like that to be considered, and I would like us to be considering addressing more poor roads, as we see that, we know it takes more money and more time, significantly more, to address roads in poor condition. And so what I'm wondering is, should we be making some changes to ensure that we are bringing more roads out of poor condition throughout the city? And so that's, was I not supposed to start my opening?
I was just checking, so I think we, it's okay, we're good. So I think what it'll be is you're, so you're moving, you're moving the report, but with option three.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a modified option three.
With a modified option three, okay. So I'm just going to ask for a seconder on moving the report with a modified option three. Yeah, Counselor Turnbull, okay? And then, and then you can, and I'll go back to you, Counselor Zekidniak, to finish the rest of what you're saying.
I was wondering, but nobody was saying stop, so I just kept going. So, so, and I will, so, option, so part, piece, the first part of it was something that I had identified as something that I'd like to see. Counselor Turnbull also had some, wanted to see, gather some more information related to sidewalks, that was noted last week. So I knew that I wanted to meet with administration to explore the concerns I had. I invited Counselor Turnbull to come with me, and so, Part One is my piece, and that timeline was discussed with administration, they understand this amendment, my, I believe that they, that this is very clear to them, like, this is the feedback that I got. In terms of Part Two of the amendment, I will defer to Counselor Turnbull to explain her rationale for putting Part Two forward. To be clear, I support it, but I think it's Counselor Turnbull's contribution, I think she's best suited to explain where she is coming from with the addition of Piece Two. This is simply asking for more information. We're not making decisions at this time, we're receiving the information still from administration about what happened last year, what's planned for this year. I just want more information, knowing that we're not able to meet the targets that we have, noticing the concerns that I have, I want more exploration of additional options that we can consider, and we can decide to do something different moving forward, or not, when we get the more information. And my understanding is Q One of Twenty Twenty Six gives them ample time to gather this information for us to consider.
Okay, so before I open to other questions, I'll maybe just let Counselor Turnbull speak to your component, and then I'll open it up to the rest of council to ask any questions.
Do you want me to read the amendment out loud, or just talk about it?
I think you can just speak to it generally, I don't think you need to read it verbatim.
Okay, so this amendment- Okay, so this amendment is to include with the, within the transportation master plan, goal of developing an accessible sidewalk plan. Because right now, examining sidewalk renewal within the context of road renewal is quite limiting, especially as it relates to accessibility. And according to our Regina accessibility plan, roads and sidewalks were the number one concerned, as indicated by 79% of respondents. So it was the number one concern voted, well, not voted, within our accessibility plan. And it's a big limiting factor to our, our residents. So the idea, and we did meet with administration, was to include a sidewalk portion to the transportation master plan, so that we can look at sidewalks without the context of roads, and identifying a prioritization matrix for routes. So when you are going from point A to point B, it is clear and barrier-free, and looking at things like transit. So if you're able to get onto transit, and then have an accessible path to go to some of these places, and prioritizing those sort of routes to have accessible routes without obstacles in between, and looking at sidewalks in the context of barrier-free paths of travel, utilizing transit. So for a good example is, is when we are only doing sidewalks with roads. And this is the case with my personal residence, is you could have a really nice sidewalk where the road got done, and then the road didn't get done, so that sidewalk was not done. And then you skip over another block, and that one is done. And so there's these sort of hit and misses. So having a strategic plan for sidewalks, and transportation, like your transportation really allows for, for more opportunities, because we know we can't get all sidewalks perfect, so with these metrics. So the Accessibility Advisory Committee does have a sidewalk working group they're developing, and they'd be a key component of this, I believe. And, yeah, so really, it's just to create a city where people are welcome to the community and able to get placed with ease, and really coming up for a plan with that without, without being limited by roads.
Awesome. Thank you, Counselor Turnbull. Okay, so I will now go to any other questions, and I see Counselor Mansonelli has a question. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just kind of paying attention to Counselor Zakidniak's amendment and the information being looked for, making sure I'm not confused between two different programs. The service levels, fair to better. Did administration within the last couple of years not just do a deep dive on street condition, as well as effects of trying to bring all the service levels past a poor condition all at the same time, examining the use of assets, money, and the repercussions from trying to achieve that? And if so, am I just remembering the residential road program, or was this the SIRP as well? I think it was a recent report. And if it is, how long till our report's still dated?
Go ahead, Mr. Oney.
Through the chair, yeah, we have done some recent work, but I'll ask Ms. Seguin to give some details.
Thanks. Through the, through the mayor, the target of 85% fair or better has not changed since the program was originally established back in 2014. But what we did do in 2019 was review or look at some alternative treatments that would improve poor roads more quickly, but not necessarily bring them back to new condition. So we did introduce a treatment, type of surface treatment to poor roads, that would bring them back to more like a fair condition, and help achieve that target a little bit quicker, and provide better road conditions for the public.
Just looking at this, by what's on the, the screen, this would allow no room for poor roads left in the criteria, or trying to move towards that in an aggressive manner. That report and the outcomes, does that have any information that might inform this decision? Just before we re-rate the whole book, it was kind of the whole point of why we went down that road and got that report back then. Some of the limitations of ability to do work and the realities of it were delineated within that report. And I'm just wondering if they come forward without using a lot of administration time to bring us all up to speed again.
Through the mayor, I'll start, and then maybe Mr. Warren has something to add. I think if I understand correctly about the amendment, looking to address more poor roads, I don't think it's limited to how we would treat poor roads. So it gives us, we'd bring back different options that would do that. Because we are pretty close to achieving our 85% fair or better, doing more poor roads would likely result in a different level of service for, a higher level of service for the residential road, which would be something council would consider when the report was brought back. I don't know if Mr. Warren has any, no, nothing else.
Anything further, Counselor Mansonelli?
No, that's fine. I, I think that's everything I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Burton, go ahead.
I just don't know where to drop this exactly to, but with a sidewalk master plan and then roadways, is there a relationship that needs to be established that if you have a road in excellent conditions, but the sidewalk's in poor, you can say, hey, we want to deal with that one? But then if the road isn't good, and the sidewalk's unfair, we can say there is a relationship that we do need to do it in conjunction with the road, there's economies? I was just looking to the administration, perhaps Counselor, or Turnbull, to just describe, is there some criteria established to say that, hey, sometimes it is good to do it along with the roadways versus severably, because it's in that bad a condition?
There you go. Ms. Seguin, go ahead.
Through the mayor, I would say our current practice today is to look at the road and sidewalk together. So if we go in and the road is poor, we will definitely assess the sidewalk at the same time, and as you suggest, look for efficiencies. I think what this motion is suggesting is a case where maybe the road isn't driving the, the need to look at that location, but rather just the sidewalk alone, looking at that location, and prioritizing it for repair, even if the road doesn't require anything.
And through the chair then, but there'd still be a, an evaluation of both the road and the sidewalk, and it could be that it tips in favor of sidewalk, but you'd still examine economies if, if it did make more apparent.
That's correct. And through the mayor, we actually do that for all of the infrastructure in the area, so we're not just looking at the surface infrastructure. We're also assessing the underground infrastructure whenever we go to a location, because there's no point fixing the surface if we're going to be there digging up to do the underground infrastructure at any time shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Turnbull?
To the chair, I just wanted to ask how the sidewalk, accessible sidewalk plan would relate to the Regina accessibility plan?
Through the mayor, I'll start, and then perhaps Ms. Stock would have something to add.
Yeah.
We're certainly aware of the actions identified within the accessibility plan. Many of them relate to either programs that we already have, or goals and actions within the transportation master plan. So it is about executing on those and fulfilling those commitments. I don't know if Ms. Stock has anything additional to add.
Sure. I'll just add, yeah, just along the same lines that I think the, what, the language you've got there is really well-aligned with what we already have in the accessibility plan, and maybe provide some additional detail. But as you said, sidewalks are the number one priority for people with disabilities in the city across all our forms of engagement. That's what we heard consistently. And so, yeah, I think it's, it's really well-aligned. I don't see any conflict or negative impact.
And then I guess my other question would be, we would, like mentioned, efficiencies would still be, would be noted. It would just be to make this plan. So this, this isn't been, this isn't a predetermined plan, this is to make the plan, correct?
Yes, through the mayor, this is common for most of our infrastructure. There are, we look at all of the infrastructure independently from the condition or the performance that it, the service it provides. And there's different, or there's different priorities within each individual silo of infrastructure. But when we go to do work at any one particular location, we have to balance those priorities and make sure the work is integrated. So that will always be the case when we go to any location.
Thank you. Okay, I'll just note, I, procedurally, only the mover, sorry, because you had spoken, I kind of thought it was a part of the moving, but there's one mover, so I shouldn't have gone back. I just want to clarify, I shouldn't have gone back for a second round. That's the second time I've done it. I only get one more strike, so just wanted to clarify, but all good. Okay, let me just clean up the mics here. Seeing no other questions, I will go back to Counselor Zakidniak to close debate. Anything further, Counselor Zakidniak?
Yeah, just that, you know, this was noted in the report, like I'm just, I'm responding to concerns that I've seen within my own board in terms of the condition of roads, and whether or not the, the condition of those roads will be, when they will be addressed. And secondly, concerns noted in the actual report, that administration said, hey, there may be a problem with the target that we have unofficially set as an administration, and we're willing to dig into this further. And so I'm saying, yes, please, let's dig into it further, and then consider the options in front of us, and whether or not we wish to make changes. And I'm, you'll also note that there's nothing prescriptive about addressing more poor roads. I don't know how many would make sense to address, or if it makes sense to address additional poor roads at all. I just would like to consider some additional options, have some options presented to us, and go from there. In an ideal world, we would not have any poor roads in Regina, but unfortunately, that's not the world we live in. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so with that, debate closed. I will ask the clerk to start the vote. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Counselor, please. And a seconder? Counselor Zakidniak? I will call the question. Any opposed? And carried. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great rest of the day.